...for August 25th will come to order, please. Roll call.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. Gault? Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight, Commissioner Abraham has kindly agreed to do our invocation. Thank you. And our pledge of allegiance tonight is Kate Bidwell, one of my best friends. And she's a Clark Elementary 5th grader, so we're happy to have you here tonight to do the pledge. Stand for the invocation.
Our Father, who art in heaven, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for the beautiful weather. Father, we ask that you be with those community members that have suffered loss this week, in the past couple of weeks. We pray that your Holy Spirit will comfort them, strengthen them as they go through this valley of pain. Us to always reflect your character. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Okay. You can pull it down.
Okay. Settle. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions, City Manager?
There are none.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for August 11th, 2015, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
At this time, I want to read a resolution in support of McCracken County's submission of an application to participate in the Kentucky Work Ready Communities Initiative. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Supporting McCracken County Submission of an Application for Work Ready Communities in the Kentucky Workforce Investment Board's Work Ready Community Initiative" be adopted.
Second.
City Clerk? Any comments?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We've got several appointments tonight. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Gwen Taylor as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission to replace Sherlorn Jeter, whose term has expired. This term will expire July 24th, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kayler in appointing Gwen Taylor as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jackie Smith, Henry Barber, Rita McKeel, Mary Hammond, Kathy Keeny, Chuck Wall, and Paul Grumley to the Civic Beautification Board. These terms will expire July 1st, 2019. Furthermore, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Cindy Jones, Debbie Long, Trish Hines to the Civic Beautification Board to replace Mary Thompson, Phyllis Stovasen, and Roe Morris, respectively, whose terms have expired. These terms will expire July 1st, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jackie Smith, Henry Barber, Rita McKeel, Mary Hammond, Kathy Keeny, Chuck Wall, and Paul Grumley, and in appointing Cindy Jones, Debbie Long, Trish Hines as members of the City Beautification Board.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Henry Barber as a member of the Tree Advisory Board. This term will expire July 26th, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Henry Barber as a member of the Tree Advisory Board.
Second. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint John Shadle and Lorraine Schramke as members of the Paducah Planning Commission. These terms will expire August 31st, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing John Shadle and Lorraine Schramke as members of the Paducah Planning Commission.
Seconded.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Carol Young and Tracy Jones as members of the Board of Adjustment. These terms will expire August 31st, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Carol Young, Tracy Jones, as members of the Board of Adjustment.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Brad Otterburn and Shirley Walker as members of the Forest Hills Village, Inc. Board. These terms will expire November 4th, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Brad Otterburn and Shirley Walker as members of the Forest Hills Village Incorporated Board.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And we just reappointed you, Tracy. So, once again, I'd like to thank all of these people on these boards that have agreed to serve. They have a great responsibility being on our boards. They have a duty to do the best job they can for the city to make decisions that they make on each of these boards, and we appreciate their services. We'll go on to our motions. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Notice of Cancellation for the Paducah Board of Commissioners for August 18, 2015. Certificates of Liability Insurance for BNR Electrical, Inc., Falconite Real Estate Holdings, LLC, Able Rail Service, LLC, and Luther Snow Concrete, Inc. Deed of Conveyance with 432 Broadway, LLC for the property located at 432 Broadway. Deed of Conveyance with Tommy and Darlene Fletcher for a portion of 3341 Olivet Church Road for permanent drainage and public utility easement for Olivet Church Road Project. Deed of Conveyance with Eric and Karen Good for a portion of 5101 Concord Avenue for permanent drainage and public utility easement for Olivet Church Road Project. Under contracts and agreements, one-year renewal agreement with Aramark Uniform Services for the Engineering Public Works and Parks Department, a grant agreement for the Community Development Block Grant Project for the Four Rivers Recovery Center. Notice of Termination of the Memorandum of Understanding with Coca-Cola Refreshments, USA, Inc., dated October 31st, 2013. Notice of Approval of Evidentiary Materials and Release of Funds for the Community Development Block Grant for the Four Rivers Recovery Center. Real Estate Closing Documents with Kentucky Holdings One, LLC for the property located at 501 North Third Street. Pre-closing documents from real estate purchase agreement, ordinance number 2015-38229. Notice of Adoption and Summary of Ordinants, Seller Resolution, Seller Good Standing Certificate, and Seller Closing Instructions. For the closing documents, Settlement Statement HUD One, HUD One Certification, Deed of Conveyance, Non-Foreign Affidavit, Tax Agreement, Owner's Affidavit, and GAAP Undertaking, Copy of Check and Wiring Instructions. Entitled Documents, Title Examination Letter. Post-closing documents, Termination of Lease with Unknown Tenant, Release of Assignment of Rents from Paducah Bank, with no exception. Bid for Planning Department, 908 Clark Street, 403 South Ninth Street, to Don and Jennifer Bryant, 2530, 2540, and 2545 Barnett Street, to Michael Todd Knuckles, 1009 Boyd Street, to Ray S. Cobb, 1006 South Eleventh Street, to Miguel Pascal Elias, and 1028 South Fourth Street, to Lamond Blair.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. On to our municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Hi, Steve.
Evening, Mayor. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move that the mayor, excuse me, I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor or her designate to submit a letter of request to the Kentucky Fire Sprinkler Association Foundation, KFSCA, to request $2,500 for the funding to contribute to support for the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program be adopted.
Second.
Aye.
This is pretty straightforward. The Kentucky Sprinkler, Fire Sprinkler Association Foundation, past several years, has supported the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program. This year, we're asking for $2,500 for assessment and materials.
Any questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Well, I have a, just while you're up, can you talk a little bit about that program?
Yeah, the program is a coalition. We've sent people off to school, includes the Police Department, Fire Department, and we're engaging some people outside, others in the community. NECO is doing some of the assessments. Some of the judges are involved. Red Cross is involved. I'm not sure all the people are involved. There's a lot of people involved. They have classes, four classes, about an hour and a half each. Some of these juveniles are there because they've shown a tendency to enjoy fire. Others are there court-ordered. They have four classes, about an hour and a half each. And they've gone, we've done about 75 juveniles so far who've participated in the class and had real good success so far.
Obviously, there's some data that warrants that type of involvement with those professionals.
Yes.
So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Application and All Documents Necessary on behalf of Paducah Main Street through the Kentucky Department for Local Government Renaissance on Main Program for Funds in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,000 for the Artful Bike Racks Project" be adopted.
Second.
Hi, Steve. How's that project coming along?
Fine. We've made the selection, the small committee, on the sculpture slash bike racks for the downtown area. One of our local artists, Char Downs, was selected. There's, obviously, the preliminary design is done. We have $2,500 already raised through the Paducah Board of Realtors. This $5,000 through Kentucky Heritage Council, I'm sorry, the Department of Local Government, would finish off the funding for the project.
So, you've got all the funding for it?
We have $2,500. This $5,000, if funded from the Department of Local Government, would complete the funding necessary for the project.
Okay. When will we get to see the design?
I will be, how about tomorrow? I'll pass them out to you all tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to call the roll, please? Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Commissioner Wilson, please. I, wait a minute.
I believe, Mr. Abraham.
Go to the next one. Oh, the next one.
There's really not a name for that next one.
Mr. Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Bid of Michael Todd Knuckles in the Amount of $1,500 for Purchase of Real Property Located at 2530 and 2540, along with 2546 Barnett Street," and authorizes the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second. Some of our excess properties?
Yes, all four of the next agenda items are on the surplus property list. As always, before we put these on the advertising that Paducah signed, we do notify the adjacent property owners to let them know that we are advertising the property to give them the opportunity to bid on them. So, most of these adjacent property owners are actually the ones purchasing the property for expansion, or in one case, even future construction, hopefully.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Bid of Ray Cobb in the Amount of $300 for the Purchase of Real Property Located at 1009 Boyd Street," and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second.
What was the name on that?
Ray Cobb.
Ray Cobb. I remember he had a barber, if it's the same Ray Cobb, he had a barber shop.
It's Sam Cobb.
It was Sam Cobb. Maybe that was his, I'm pretty sure it's a relative. But when we first moved here in 1972, that was the first place I got my haircut.
Did you have, so you had hair back then?
You had hair back.
Oh! You opened the door. I'm looking at you, being in a barber shop.
I tell you, Richard, I'll hold it.
Serenity now. You hurt me deep when you talk like that. You know that. Yes, I did.
I thought it was planned.
I've had afros, fades, jury curls. I've had all that. But I think I'm enjoying this right here better, though.
Any more comments?
No.
How would you top that?
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Mr. Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Bid of Lamond Blair in the Amount of $50 for Purchase of the Real Property Located at 1028 South Fourth Street," and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Bid of Miguel Elias in the Amount of $50 for Purchase of Real Property Located at 1006 South Eleventh Street," and authorizes the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go to our ordinances adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I've got a long one here. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Issuance of Up to $12 Million of Industrial Building Revenue Bonds, Series 2015, Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP Project, of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, proceeds of which shall be used to pay the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an industrial building suitable for use as a hotel, together with all related and subordinate facilities necessary to the operation thereof, to be located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and leased to Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds. Authorizing a lease agreement appropriate for the production and the disposition of such revenues, and to further secure such bonds. Authorizing a bond purchase agreement, mortgage payment in lieu of taxes agreement, and the assignments, and authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds."
Second.
Hold on, we're halfway through. Sorry. I have a, yeah, the pause, it refreshes. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance, the ordinance, authorizes the issuance of industrial building revenue bonds, Series 2015, Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a building suitable for use as a hotel to be located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and to be leased to Hotel Riverfront Hotel LP, the LSE, a Kentucky Limited Partnership pursuant to an agreement of lease, the agreement. The bonds are being issued under Chapter 103 of the Kentucky Revia Statutes and are to be retired directly or indirectly from the lease payments to be made by the LSE pursuant to the agreement. This ordinance also authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of the various financing documents involved in the transaction, including the agreement, the bond purchase agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, assignments, and a mortgage and assignments in substantially the form submitted to the Board of Commissioners. A copy of the ordinance and the form of the basic documents for such transaction will be on file in the office of the City Clerk. The bonds are to be retired from the lease payments to be made by the LSE pursuant to the agreement. And pursuant to Sections 103.200 to 103.285 of the Kentucky Revia Statutes, the bonds do not constitute an indebtedness of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, within the meaning of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Second. Thank you. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving a Parking Site Lease Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP With Respect to a Public Project and Authorizing the Execution of the Parking Site Lease and Other Documents Related There Too." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves and authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of a parking site lease with Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP for purposes of hotel development beneficial to the economic development of the downtown area upon the terms set forth in the development agreement dated June 29, 2015. A copy of the ordinance in the form of the basic document for such transaction will be on file in the office of the City Clerk.
Second.
I'll make a brief comment.
Sure.
Since you received a draft, we have one relatively minor change. The language in there that you have makes the decision to assign the lease, the approval for that, the sole prerogative of the city. Since Friday, Lynn Gate has asked, and I recommended approval to put in the agreement, the addition of language that would state that that should not be unreasonably withheld. And I don't think that that's at all limiting to the city. It simply makes us substantiate whatever reason we might have for why we would not agree to an assignment of the use of the parking lot to a subsequent owner of the hotel.
That's standard, anyway.
It's pretty standard, yeah.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Contract for Services, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Paducah Area Transit System for Public Transportation Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $53,750 for public transportation services for Paducah McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30th, 2016.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. All of these contract for services, of course, we discuss in our budget session, so we're just formalizing these. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with the Luther F. Carson Four Rivers Center Incorporated for Specific Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Luther F. Carson Four Rivers Center Incorporated in the amount of $64,337 to provide an extensive youth performance schedule and continue with their tradition of the Class Act Series. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2016.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the Community Scholarship Program." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of $125,000 for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2016.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to our ordinances introduction, so we don't vote on any of these tonight. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving a Right of First Refusal Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP With Respect to a Public Project and Authorizing the Execution of the Right of First Refusal Agreement and Other Documents Related." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves and authorizes the execution on behalf of the city, a right of first refusal agreement with Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP for purposes of hotel development beneficial to the economic development of the downtown area upon the terms set forth in the development agreement dated June 29, 2015. A copy of the ordinance and the form of the basic document for each transaction will be on file in the office of the City Clerk.
Second. Hi, Steve.
We will execute yet another agreement related to the hotel. This is the right of first refusal, and this tracks very closely with what is in the previously approved development plan for 501 North Third, the former nursing home property. We have, we have closed our purchase on that property, and we will allow the hotel to do a couple of things. First, pursuant to the development plan, they'll get to use part of it for parking related to the hotel. But they also will have the right, per the agreement, to, for a period of three years after the certificate of occupancy is issued on the hotel, so, let's say, about four and a half years from today, that at any time in that period, if the city markets the property or if we find another development proposal, Lynn Gate would have the first right of refusal on that to meet that, that deal that is proposed. the first right of refusal on that to, to meet that, that deal that is proposed. Another part of the deal is, of the first right of refusal is also an option to purchase the property for $300,000, and that reflects about what we will have into the property after we demolish it. Of course, we bought it for $252,000.
When, when do we plan to start demolish, or to do anything with that building?
The last of the items that, that the local Barclay Center wanted to retrieve from it, they, they finished that last Friday. So, really, any time going forward, we can, we can do that. I think we have a budget appropriation for that. I think, I think Jeff is maybe thinking about that.
It's beginning to look.
It is. It looks like a vacant building at this point. I think in the interim.
Grown up around it.
We'll, we'll get over there and take care of the weeds and grass, and, and kind of the, some of the stuff that has already fallen off the building, get it at least looking presentable, and then we'll proceed with demolition.
Some interest shown, and some salvaging, and at any rate, there's nothing being accomplished by leaving it there now that all the rights to the former owner are, are behind us. So, I expect we'll get after that pretty quick, as Steve says.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Finance Department Director to make payment to advance fire and rescue equipment for the purchase of rescue equipment to be used by the Paducah Fire Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby authorizes and directs the Finance Director to make payment in the amount of $27,346 to advance fire and rescue equipment for the purchase and rescue equipment listed below to be used by the Paducah Fire Department. A Genesis E-Force cutter, $9,795, a Genesis E-Force spreader, $950, a Genesis E-Force battery of $156, a Genesis E-Force ram, $7495, and a Genesis E-pack, E-battery pack, $650.
Second. Assistant Chief, you want to talk about this?
These are five separate tools that we have, we're budgeted for already. None of them which reach the threshold, that they require bids, but three of them reached the threshold where we required quotes. Advanced Fire Rescue was the lowest quota on all of them. So, but the, the total aggregate amount passes the $20,000 amount, and we need a ordinance for, for that.
Any questions? Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute change order number one with Woodall Companies, LLC for the Paducah Parks Service Recreation Center Roof Replacement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute change order number one with Woodall Companies, LLC in the amount of $1,976 for additional materials and necessary work complete, required to complete the roof replacement project at the Paducah Parks Services Recreation Center, therefore increasing the total contract price to $31,514.
Seconded.
Mayor Commission, this project is complete. I'd just like for you all to know that that project went really well. But when they removed the gutters from the building, they realized that the, the boards behind it were rotten, and evidently, when the roof was put on the first time, they didn't start the roof properly, which caused the entire eve to rot off. So, that $1,900 or $1,976 was to replace the rotten wood before they could start the new roofing coming up. So, it's very little and very, I guess, a very good return on that, on that project. But that project is complete.
How many times does that happen?
It's the first time I've seen it happen. I mean, just when you put on your first piece, when you put on your first piece of roof, and you put it on upside down, and then the next piece goes on top of it, and the first upside down piece was not there. So, from day one, it was, and it started rotten, or rotting.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement for gas construction required for the Oliver Church Roadway Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement between Atmos Energy and the city of Paducah, Kentucky, for reimbursement for actual labor and materials necessary for gas construction to complete the Oliver Church Roadway Improvement Project estimated at $14,195.50.
Mayor Commission, this work is.
Second.
Also associated with the Oliver Church Road Relocation Project. This work is complete. The contract that Commissioner Abraham just read is synonymous with all the contracts that we read with all the other utility companies. It's just a minimal amount for them.
So, that project is moving along well?
I'd invite you to go, I'd invite you to go out and see the progress on it. Depends, yes, it is moving along well, but if you live in the area, I'm sure it's disrupting and inconvenient, but I just ask the public to be patient. It'll be nice when it's complete.
Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each, providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCraken County and surrounding regions. This contract shall expire June 30, 2016.
Second. City Manager's Report. Do we vote? Oh, no, you don't vote on this.
That one we didn't, okay.
It's introduction.
I'll, I'll just briefly comment.
I know, I'm sorry.
On a couple things. The RFP for the solid waste management facilities is being finalized, and we expect to be out the door within the next couple of weeks. That's a contract with a consultant that you all approved a few weeks ago. It takes a while, once we get a consultant on board, to get something in final form to send out, to respond to by prospective providers of those services over potentially the next 20 years. But in a couple weeks, we'll be out with that, and there'll be a four to six weeks period for interested parties to respond, and an evaluation period after that, and then a transition period, depending on who the successful bidder is on that project, and a new contract sometime, hopefully, early in 2015. City Hall, we are negotiating a contract with one of the proposing firms. We had a couple people meet with the company last week. Expect to have something before you, if not the next meeting, the one after that, and it, it will, and this is part of what's causing a little time to be taken. It, it does have a dual approach towards creating a template and cost estimates for both a renovation of the existing facility and also a new design. So, typically, you write a, a contract for one or the other, but this one, again, with that dual pathway, it's a little trickier, and so it's taking a little bit more time. We expect to have something for you shortly. Stormwater, we are proceeding, and I have a meeting with Rick and his staff this week to discuss the release of an RFQ for interested firms that would want to do a reassessment of our stormwater management capabilities and prospective needs into the future. So, we are proceeding with that, doing some research on potential financing tools for that, most especially something called a stormwater management fee that Kentucky law provides authority for. It's in use across the country. It's basically a per parcel assessment for the expense associated with dealing with stormwater that's displaced from property. That would address what I would consider to be a serious deficiency in our budget currently for funding for stormwater management. So, Rick, I know when we have this conversation, likes to refer to it as prospectively the creation of a stormwater utility, and I think there's a lot of sense to that because it, it puts a focus on it and some structure to it, and really increases, I think, our, our commitment going forward. So, we are working on that. You approved earlier a couple of agreements associated with the hotel. Things are moving just great. In fact, we're having trouble keeping up with the developer, which is a wonderful thing to have.
He said, "Don't, don't hold me back."
In addition to what you heard tonight, last week, we did receive a complete set of plans from the developer for the hotel. So, that's exciting. That's a first in this project, whether it be the, the last effort, or, or obviously this one. But clearly, the commitment is there, and, and the developer, developers, Mr. and Mrs. Higginson, are demonstrating their commitment to the project and their ability to perform. So, very, very encouraging. We look forward to a steady line of progress going forward with a groundbreaking, I believe, sometime early fall, hopefully. So, good news where that is concerned. 432 Broadway, we've run into some unexpected complications with support structures that overlapped the boundary between that building and the one next to it. Survey was completed this week after initial demolition began, and this was discovered, and the survey just completed today. But it's necessary to determine the exact boundary line and where the structural support mechanisms lie with respect to both buildings, so that consulting engineers can address the, the problem that's been discovered and find solutions. I will say that with respect to our general contractor, that the contractor has moved responsibly and swiftly on the pathway to finding solutions, got a survey company hired and completed their work within a week of when it was discovered, and we know has been in touch with a number of structural engineers about coming in and, and coming up with some recommendations for how to deal with the situation that was encountered. It's not to say that we expect demolition will resume within the next day or two, but the effort to find solutions to get that process up and going again, I think, has proceeded admirably. The street barricades are still up. I, I wouldn't want to promise that that's going to change during any interim period of time between now and when demolition resumes. But if there is any opportunity to consider do that, we will definitely be visiting with the contractor. About that, it is the contractor's project area for 90 days, so that's not a call that the city can make unilaterally. I think that's all I have.
Any commissioners' comments today?
Well, I have one. I'd just like to congratulate our public high school, Paducah-Tillman High School, for a well-fought victory over the county high school on Saturday. Both teams played extremely well. We played a little bit better. And moving forward, I think both Paducah-Tillman and McCraken County have a successful season. So, just wanted to congratulate our guys for getting it done.
It's always good to have a little rivalry, right?
Oh, yeah.
And when's, when do you, when do we play Mayfield again?
Oh, my gosh. Next, next Friday.
Oh, is that next Friday?
And who are you taking with you?
Commissioner Rhodes, up close, personal, behind the scenes. He's on the sidelines. I told him, it gets, it gets a little physical down there on the sideline. Not that he can't handle it. I'm not saying that. Just keep your head on the swivel, man, I'm telling you. Just stay close to me, I got you. All right.
A report to follow.
All right, well, if that's all, just want to tell everybody to enjoy this beautiful weather we're having. I think it is going to get a little bit warmer in the next few days, but it's really been nice. Meetings adjourned.